There we go. Thank you, Council.
Calendar item number three, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council awards certificates of commendation to the Riviere High School Girls volleyball team and their coaches for finishing their season undefeated with a record of 20-0.
Impressive.
This is why I decided to speak from here today. I want to make sure all you guys are in the picture because you deserve this. Look at you guys posing for a picture up there. I love it. So I have some things I wrote down that I'd like to say. Teamwork is the ability to work together towards a common vision. Shh. The ability to direct individual accomplishments towards organizational objectives. It's the fuel that allows common people to attain uncommon results. This season, you went 20 and 0. Yeah, don't hold back the smiles, man. That's awesome. A feat so difficult to attain that most teams past, present, and future will never see it. Some people might call it luck, but I know better. I know that each team you face is not the same. Each team you go up against has different athletes at all different levels of athleticism, all with different strengths, different weaknesses, with different coaches, different game plans, different methods, different mechanics, which only means that this team standing before us today is incredibly versatile. Versatility is one of the most important attributes an athlete can possess in any sport. And I'd like to talk a little bit about pressure. You win your first game. Okay, guys, we're off to a good start. You win your third game. We're on a winning streak. You win seven games in a row. Wow, we are unstoppable. You win 10 in a row. I can't believe we've gone undefeated the first half of this year. And this is where the chatter starts, right? This is when people start saying, are they going to go undefeated? Can they really do it? You win 12 games in a row. Guys, we can really do this. You win 15 games in a row. Guys, I'm going to throw up. You win 19 straight games. You can feel every single eye shift to you. People who want you to win, people who want you to lose. And then you win your 20th game. And it's all worth it. It all goes away. Now, why did I explain all of that? Why do I go into such depth? You've proven to everyone that physical toughness is not the most important kind. That to survive in any aspect of life, you need to be strong here and you need to be strong here. I have one challenge for all of you. No matter where you go or what you do in life, you were great this year. Be great again. And then again. And then again. And so on. I'm not going to say again like 20 times. You get the point, right? With that said, on behalf of myself and the entire City Council, it is our honor to present the 2022 Riviera High School Girls volleyball players and coaches with certificates of commendation for going undefeated 20-0. Congratulations, guys. With the help of our Council President Jerry Visconti, I'm going to call out names and he's going to hand you your certificates now, please. I checked with all of you about how to pronounce your names and, you know, Councilor Keefe has been guiding me on pronouncing things properly, so. First, Liv Young. Yeah. Captain Fiona Musaray. Camilla Etcheverry. Juanita Geraldo. Sabrina Endurado. Kelloran Fernandez. Stephanie Espinoza. Ooh, I just want to go back. I'm sorry. That was supposed to be Captain Sabrina Endurado. Sorry. Leah Doucette. Gabby De La Rosa. Kiara Rodriguez. Ira Vranich. Captain, Captain Ira Vranich. And Captain Tasia De Costa. Assistant Coach Emily Hostetter. And Head Coach Leann O'Hara. I'm sure people are going to want to take a picture, so.
Calendar item number four, motion presented by Councilor Cogliandro that the City Council award a certificate of commendation to Coach Leann O'Hara Mimo for being the recipient of the GBL Volleyball Coach of the Year after her spring 2022 season coaching the RHS Boys Volleyball Team.
Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, sir. Coach O'Hara, two in one night. This one hits home for me a little bit. As somebody who was raised by a woman who was a professional athlete, top of her game, I secondhand understand being a woman in a man's world. And for you to be the coach of a male team and get the GBL Coach of the Year award is an amazing feat and it deserves to be recognized separately. So, an acknowledgement of your extraordinary achievement for being chosen as the Greater Boston League volleyball coach for the year of 2022 for coaching the Riviera High School Boy Volleyball Team during the spring of 2022 season. Special recognition is hereby accorded to Leann O'Hara. Congratulations.
Onto public hearings, calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance amending the composition of the Public Arts Commission. Section 1, section 2.89.020A Commission Composition Terms, Appointments, and Vacancies of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Riviera is hereby amended by deleting the words "five" and "no more than seven" and inserting in place thereof the words "seven" and "no more than nine."
This is a public hearing, so we'll start off with proponents, those in favor. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents, those opposed. Hearing and seeing none, looks like we'll close that side. City councilors, anybody wish to speak on this? Vice President Serena.
Mr. President, thank you through you to, I'm not sure if, I'm actually not sure who would be here to answer this question, but just wondering the reasoning why we're going from seven members to nine members of the Public Arts Commission? If there's a reason or the rationale behind this?
I would maybe just have that discussion with Councilor McKenna, and there is a reasoning for it, and she would be the person to speak on that.
Any other, this is going to get referred to Legislative Affairs anyway, so you can probably ask that question to her when she's back. Okay, hearing and seeing no further questions, let's refer this to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number six, hearing called as ordered for the purpose of establishing the minimum residential factor for fiscal year 2023.
Proponents, let's start off with proponents. Name and address.
Good evening, Dana Branch of 40, Chairman of the Board of Assessors, along with Board Member Matthew McGrath. Tonight, we would ask the Council to adopt the residential factor of .876644. That allows us to shift the tax rate 100% to 75% onto the commercial. In doing so, it allows us to adopt the lowest residential tax rate possible. I also have a presentation, but do you want me to do that after the opponents or go through it now?
We can do that now. Yeah.
Sure. Next slide. So to start off with, the levy limit. So the levy limit is the maximum amount that we can raise through real estate and personal property taxes. So last fiscal year, we were around 102 million. So that is kind of our basis to start off for fiscal '23. Then under the law, we're allowed to increase that 2.5%. So that gets us around 104,625,000. And then on top of that, we're allowed to increase the levy by any new growth. So for this year, our new growth was just over $3 million. So that gives us a total tax levy of what we're going to collect through real estate taxes of 170,656,370. Next slide. So what is growth? Growth is anything that's subject to taxation for the first time. So any new articles of personal property, anything that was previously exempt that came online, any split or merge parcels that get separated that we get for the first time, condo conversions, you know, anything that increases value through new construction, additions, renovations, things like that. So we had in tax dollars just about $1 million in residential growth and doubled that this year, first time, of $2 million. So that's how we come up with that $3 million growth number. Next slide. Where did all this growth come from? So on the residential side, some of the major projects were 656 Ocean Ave, 22 Witten Ave, the old G&amp;J site that's going to be developed, 257 Washington Ave, Suffolk Down subdivision. Again, new construction homes, additions, rehabs, and renovations. On the commercial side, we have the Amazon Squire Road. Again, the Suffolk Down subdivision, they have some residential portion and some commercial as well. 400 Ocean Ave, that finished up, so we got the remainder of that. On the personal property side, it was very big this year. We got a lot of growth through National Grid, gas and electric, Comcast, RCN, running a lot of new wires. And then on the cellular side, Sprint Verizon and T-Mobile also contributed to that. Next slide, please. How are values determined? So, Mass General Law requires that municipalities establish full and fair cash value of all real estate as of January 1st each year. So for fiscal '23, we're looking at a value date of January 1, 2022. And in doing so, we have to look at the previous 12 months market for sales and income and expense data. So we're looking at 2021 to come up with this fiscal '23 values. During calendar '21, we had around 1,300 transactions. Of those 1,300, around 500 were deemed to be arms-length. So we get rid of all of the dollar sales, family sales, anything that's low, that doesn't make sense, anything that's crazy high. You know, we flush all that stuff out and try to pick out the best sales that represent what the market really truly is. Typically, each year, we see around 3% to 5% of our housing stock transfer. The DOR, Department of Revenue, each year does a statistical analysis of our proposed valuations, and they do a whole comprehensive analysis. They look at our appraisal process, they review all of our values in detail, and make sure that we're actually giving a full and fair market value representation. Every five years, we do a revaluation, and fiscal '23 was a revaluation. So it's just a more in-depth analysis from the DOR. Next slide. So the reason we're here tonight is the minimum residential factor. So this is used to make sure that the shift of the tax burden complies with the Massachusetts general law. So we typically always go to that 175 shift because that gives us the greatest benefit to the residential taxpayer. That lets us get the lowest tax rate possible under the law. So again, we'd be asking to vote that out favorably tonight. In doing so, we would submit proposed tax rates to the Department of Revenue, and we'd be looking at a residential tax rate of $9.51 per thousand and a commercial tax rate of $18.98 per thousand. And next slide. This is everybody's favorite. So what does that mean in terms of what happens to values this year and how does that, you know, how does that give us an end result in a tax bill? So these are kind of our major land use classes. Single families, value-wise, are up around 10%. Again, if we adopt that tax rate and that shift, we'd be looking at an average increase of around $33, some more, some less, but again, on average, you know, not a substantial increase, around $33. Condominiums, values are up 9.7% overall, and they'd be looking at a small decrease on average, around $41. Two families, pretty comparable, up around 9.3% value-wise. Tax bill-wise, you know, pretty flat or down, $20 on average. Three families are up just under 10%, and they'd be looking at about a $90 increase. Commercial industrial overall, value-wise, was up 22%, and they'd be looking at like a 14% increase in their tax bill. That's a little skewed because we have some very high-end commercial, and then we have some lower, you know, mom and pop restaurant-type places. They won't be seeing that type of an increase, a little skewed because of the bigger ones are up so much more. But that pretty much summarizes kind of what's happening to values and taxes this year. And again, we would just ask that Council votes out favorably on that minimum residential factor, and of course, I'm here for any questions.
Any other, we're going to, it's a public hearing, so we're going to start off with proponents, opponents, and then we'll go to the Council for questions, and Dana could come back up here and answer the questions. How's that? Thank you, Dana. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side. Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Councilors, Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dana, just a question. Let's take, for instance, the G&amp;J site. There's been a considerable amount of work done down there with regard to pilings, foundations, drainage, et cetera, et cetera. That is figured into the rate, am I correct?
Absolutely.
Even though it isn't totally constructed?
Right, yeah. So we phase it in percentage-wise each year. So I mentioned earlier the assessment date of January 1st, so Chapter 653 of the law allows us to go to June 30th on new construction. So anything new construction, we pick up as of June 30th. So whatever's there on that date, you know, that's what we would value. So like you said, if there's anything going on, if there's framing going on, we'd pick up that percentage. You know, it doesn't have to be 100% complete for us to pick up a portion of that value.
And again, that portion be, now, that's considered residential, commercial now because it's a business entity.
Residential, any apartment, anything that's residential dwelling is a residential rate, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Councilor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Assessors Office, Dana, thank you for coming up here tonight. Appreciate that. And I know that sometimes I give you a hard time. I think it's all good, it's all in good fun. So you were talking about the recent sales where you're able to, you go back to about 2021, and I'm happy to see the commercial side helping to offset the residential side. That's what we've been trying to do, and I'm glad that your office is working on that. So one of those, like skewed, you mentioned the arms-length transactions. One that I think I brought up to you before was the 500 Ocean where it sold for $158 million. Is that, would that be considered one that you're talking about where those are really high?
Commercial is a little different. It's done more on an income and expense valuation, so we do a capitalization method. I mean, obviously, the sales plays, you know, a little bit of a factor, but the income has to support it. So it's done a little bit differently, but if you take a look at that one, it's, you know, it's pretty close to.
So that's, yeah, my curiosity is, and I'm not looking at.
It sold for 155, I think, or like 135.
Okay, oh, that's fantastic. Well, then that really satisfies me. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, just real quick, Dana, first off to you and Matt and your whole department. It's not an easy job. I say this oftentimes, especially to people that we don't see that often up here before the City Council. We know how much work it is, lot of property in the city. It's, you know, obviously, you know, one of the biggest concerns that taxpayers have in the city is the tax they pay. So this is always, while it's not done often, it's a very important meeting, and certainly for residential taxpayers, the maximum shift, I think, is probably the way for the foreseeable future this city's going to be going. I'm just curious how it has been in the past and how our accounts sit with respect to, you know, any type of challenges people may have in appellate tax court, you know, possibly, or just in general, you know, people, you know, that, you know, think that they're being overcharged or over-assessed. If you could just talk about, you know, how we're doing, the city is doing financially, and also for the edification of people who, you know, may feel as though, you know, when you start to look at those numbers up there, the increases in taxes that are coming at a time when inflation is obviously up there, heating oil is going to be, you know, really hitting people in the pocketbook over the next several months. So maybe you could let people know, because so many times I've gotten calls over the years from people saying, oh, I missed the deadline to file for an abatement or something like that. Can you just very briefly explain, again, not so much for the edification of the City Council, but for people who may be watching this, what the process is if they feel that they've been over-assessed and how they can, you know, you know, if they truly feel that they're being over-assessed, what the process is to file for an abatement and what those timelines are?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that that's very important because, you know, the honest is on the taxpayer, right? It's on the homeowner to take a look at their value and do some homework. I mean, essentially, we've done our homework. We came at, you know, we came up with these values. We got them certified through Department of Revenue, but not everything's perfect, right? So the homeowner should certainly take a look at their values. Our website, you know, rivere.org or the Assessors Department, we have our full database on the website. They can look at their home, they can look at everybody else's properties, they can mix and match and take a look at them. But at the end of the day, and you're right, Council, you know, they're appealing their value, not their taxes, unfortunately. They certainly have a direct correlation, but, you know, is the value, you know, full and fair market value for that 2021 calendar year? That's what you really need to look at. So when they get their third quarter tax bill, which usually comes out, you know, last week in December or by January 1st, they have 30 days to appeal that value. We'll have the applications online, they can print it up there, they can come in the office, again, if they're not comfortable with the computer. We have books in our office with all the values of the whole city. We have a computer in our office if they want to use that. We're always available to talk as well if they have some questions or need an explanation on why, you know, certain things are, why they are, why the values are. But they only have that 30 days, and that's by state law. It's not something we set or the city sets, you know, that's state law. So from January 2nd to February 2nd, that's the time that you have to get that abatement application in. So you get that into us, we have 90 days to review it. We usually do it a lot quicker. We may come out and visit the home or the property if we think we need to. And sometimes it's just as simple as, you know, hey, we got two bathrooms, but you really only have one. That impacts value, you know, but we want to make the data, you know, as correct as possible. We try our very best to do it, but again, nothing's perfect. So, you know, come in, definitely talk to us, but very, very important, that January 2nd to February 2nd date, you know, it has to be done during that time. So we review it, the Board of Assessors reviews it. We either deny it or we grant it. We either deny it or we grant it. And then if the taxpayer is not satisfied at that point, they can appeal to the Appellate Tax Board, which is a state board. There is a cost to that, there's no cost to appeal to us, but there is a small cost to appeal to the board. And then at that point, it gives us a second chance to take a look at it. And if we feel that, you know, our value is good and, you know, we think the city did a good job to value, you know, we'll defend it with the Appellate Tax Board, and it's up to the board to make a decision. But that's generally the process.
Thank you. Thank, Mr. President, through you, just to, you know, just to finish up here. I appreciate that explanation. I don't know about other members of the City Council, but I wish I had a nickel for every time somebody asked me, "Oh, you know, when do I file for an abatement?" Or, "How do I file for an abatement?" Or, "I missed the deadline for an abatement." You know, I'm glad you gave that explanation because it is critical to people who think that they may be over-assessed. And you are a hundred percent right, obviously. I hear people talk about the tax rate, the tax rate, the tax rate. It really doesn't, the tax rate, to me, has always been meaningless. It's all based off the assessment and what we have to get to for our levy limit. And so, you know, and that is all based off the assessment. So, but you guys do a tremendous job. I know you've got a short staff down there for the number of property in the city. It's amazing. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. And I just want to add one thing. You know, oftentimes, individuals come in and we take a look at it, and, you know, they're always free to file, but we say, you know, honestly, probably not much there. And we say, you know, "Are you a senior citizen? You have limited income?" You know, we have a lot of different exemptions out there that are sometimes way more valuable than us reducing the value of their house. So, you know, if you are a senior citizen or a disabled veteran or blind or, you know, there's different things, widow, widower, you know, there are programs out there. So, you know, certainly come into the office or give us a call. And again, usually, they're more beneficial than, you know, a reduction of value.
Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dana, for the information. And I think it's really important that, that's, those are dates that are put out there tonight that a lot of people don't know about. I'm one of them. Not that I'm challenging. I think I'm gonna have a reduction according to your statement here, but I'm hopeful.
Only if you're average.
Bottom line is that, you know, people need to know that, you know, when you get the tax bill in December, you've got that one month, that thirty days to get this in and do something about it because it's not that we only want to give them thirty days. It is the state law, and you gotta follow it. But the other thing that you mentioned, and you just touched on it, is that there are many other ways that you can help taxpayers if they're in certain circumstances. And a lot of people don't know that. So maybe we should publicize that a little more.
Sure, I mean, certainly, it's on our website. Again, I know not everybody's computer savvy.
Yeah, unfortunately, the people.
There is that. We have held a couple seminars down the Senior Center as well.
Yeah. The thing is that most of the people that are probably in need are not computer literate, and they're not gonna be able to do that. But just being here tonight and we're getting this information, it's a good thing. But they gotta know that, they gotta at least get to City Hall or get somebody to City Hall in that thirty-day period. And then you can give them all the other information on how we might be able to help them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dana, your team is terrific.
Thank you.
One thing I want to bring up is, a lot of people say, "Well, jeez, I live in a two-family home. I tried to sell my house, it's only labels and one." How does something like that happen?
Right. So again, I mean, as part of the law, you know, we work off of use, so we assess what we see. If we go there and there's two units, we gotta call it a two-family. So basically, the law states is we have to use a code that most closely describes the property. So if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, to us, it's a duck. Legally, it may not be, but it is what it is. So we have to go by use.
So what you see is what you get.
What you see is what you get.
So if it's a two-family and they bought it, you know, someone didn't do their due diligence when they did their survey for the broker?
Unfortunately, yeah, and we see it a lot. And I know you hear about it a lot, but we certainly see it a lot. And I think, you know, part of the ADU ordinance, the, you know, additional dwelling unit, was try to kind of recognize that and give another avenue to legalization.
So a lot of people have to realize that what you have in your house has to match in the Building Department.
Right.
You know, so make sure they have the proper permits.
Right, that's it. A lot of unpermitted work through the years, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one point. If a person goes into a riddge on their taxes, water bill, am I correct in saying that the interest rate at that point is around fourteen percent?
Ah, that's probably more for Director of Finance. You know, is it fourteen or sixteen?
It's in that area.
I'm taxed, I'm taxed, so I think it's fourteen percent.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So I would just advise everybody who may be out there watching the council meeting to make sure you get your taxes paid on time or your water bills, excise tax bills, whatever it might be, because in the end, it's gonna cost you an awful lot of money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I just have one more question, if you wouldn't mind. Just a real quick question. Now, I don't even know if this would be for Rich or for you. How are we doing with our overlay account? Is our overlay account in good shape? Have you been made adequate, have we made adequate estimates? Have we been able to take money out of overlay and move it to other places to use for, you know, other needs for the city and so on?
Yeah, we're constantly reviewing that. Obviously, as we get appellate tax board cases, you know, I estimate those and keep a spreadsheet of those and what the exposure to the city may be. I think it was a couple months ago, we came in, we actually released three hundred thousand dollars of excess overlay for the city to appropriate. But generally, it's in good condition. I think about a million dollars is allocated this year towards the overlay. We have roughly, I'd say, a million three in excess, and we have about a million one in potential. So there's about a two, three hundred thousand dollar buffer between what we have and what could potentially be. You know, just because I estimate it to be one point one doesn't mean we'll end up paying that out. I try to defend it like it's my money, so, and I don't like to pay.
Yeah, I like that.
But yeah, I think overall, we're pretty healthy with that standpoint.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, sure, Rich, go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to add in that, like Dana said, we did release three hundred thousand dollars. You voted seventy-five thousand to the council to pay for our revaluation. We still have two hundred and twenty-five thousand that we could vote for any legal purpose. Otherwise, it'll close the free cash. So we did have some excess that we determined. But based upon the presentation, you can see that the commercial values have really jumped up, and those would generate potential large abatements. So we are raising a million dollars on the fiscal year twenty-three tax rate to address those potential liabilities. But overall, we're in good shape with the overlay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Matt, thank you, Dana.
If there's no other questions, I have one question, Dana. Looking at that chart that you put up there, it looks, looking at the tax rate from last year to this year, looks like the commercial dropped more than the residential. Would have loved to have seen.
The tax rate, residential dropped eight and a half percent, and commercial seven point six.
I'm talking in dollars.
Oh, dollar-wise, yeah.
Does that?
It's not something that we kind of pick and choose. It's all part of a huge thing. So basically, the shift that we're voting on tonight
Yep.
kind of determines what that can be, the lowest number that it can possibly be.
Okay.
And that's what it is.
And that's what it is. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, great. No other questions? Hearing and seeing none? We can do a roll call on this?
Shall the City Council adopt a residential factor of point eight seven six six four four for the purpose of establishing the tax rate for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna. I'm sorry, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fisconti?
Yes.
Yes, the minimum residential factor has been adopted. Calendar item number seven, hearing called disordered on the application of Five Twenty-nine Broadway LLC, fifty-two Fairview Street, Winthrop, Mass., to alter and extend a non-conforming use, which is a non-conforming commercial building acting as a private garage for the purpose of operating a special garage at Five Thirty-five Broadway.
Okay. Proponents?
Good evening, President and City Councillors.
Name and address again, I'm sorry.
My name is Nancy O'Neill, and I am an attorney located at fourteen Proctor Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Five Twenty-nine Broadway LLC, and I am joined by applicant and property owner, Mr. Cleason Sarnagliya. This matter first came before the City Council on August twenty-second, at which time we requested alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming use as a private garage to use as a commercial garage, which would encompass auto-repair activities. And following that meeting, we reached an agreement with a neighbor on School Street that the property would be used as an auto-body shop. And an auto-body shop is classified as a special garage under the Revere zoning ordinance. Accordingly, on October seventeenth, we withdrew our previous application for a commercial garage, and we are now seeking approval for alteration of the pre-existing non-conforming use to a special garage, as was agreed upon with the neighbor. And you have all heard about this project at previous City Council and zoning subcommittee meetings. So I won't get into the finer details. In essence, the applicant is seeking to expand his existing business in the Five Twenty-nine Broadway storefront to the Five Thirty-five Broadway portion of the building. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We're gonna continue on with proponents first. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Those opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side. City Councillors. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I've said before, this project has been nothing but a team effort between the lawyer firm, the owner of the business, myself, and the butler, Ms. Shand, who lives right next door. They have gone above and beyond to appease her. I am thrilled to have a business owner that's such a good neighbor, sincerely. And I am a hundred percent on board with this. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is obviously going to zoning.
It is.
And I'll ask most of my questions there. So special garage that would, this is gonna be a bought, an auto-body shop, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I'm sure it's kind of conformed to all the modern-day special spray boots and all that stuff.
That's correct.
And I'll ask most of those questions at the zoning subcommittee, but, you know, I don't see any problem with this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none? Let's refer this to zoning. Thank you.
Calendar item number eight, hearing called disordered on a petition submitted by Mass. Electric National Grid to construct a line of underground conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures, with a plan filed under three zero six, three five six oh nine, Marshall Street.
Let's start off with proponents. Those in favor? Name and address for the record.
Good evening, Councillors. My name is Moses Okokoro. I'm here on behalf of National Grid Electric Side. So for this petition, National Grid is requesting to install one three-inch conduit from an existing pole towards sixty-five Marshall Streets. Repair, thank you. And the existence service, you know, is currently overhead. They just want to go underground. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Any opponents? Those opposed? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close that side. Councillors. Councilor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I just want to thank Moses. Moses has been very diligent in dealing with National Grid issues, especially new issues like this. He takes the time to talk with us, to walk us through it, to show us exactly what they're doing, which, to be honest, in my three years on the council, I have not had somebody as attentive as Moses to deal with through National Grid. So we spoke about this earlier, and I am in support. It doesn't seem that any neighbors are opposed or concerned. They haven't reached out, and they're not here tonight. This was at the request of the customer on Marshall Street, and it's pretty straightforward. So I will be supporting it. That is not to say, though, and I did speak to Moses about this separately, and this is not his department, but later on in the meeting, I do have a motion, I do have an ax to grind with National Grid, as my other ward councillors do. But that has nothing to do with this, so I will be supporting this, and I would ask my other councillors to support it as well. Thank you.
Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm in support also. You know, there's certain things that National Grid needs to get done, for sure. You know, and, you know, there've been times up here where the City Council has not supported the efforts to go forward. And all it does is delay the applicant, delay. But there are things, like Councilor Serino just said, that needs to be addressed. And that's gonna be for later in the meeting. Councilor Serino, I know, has a motion in to discuss a few things. Just from my own personal perspective, I don't think anybody would disagree. You know, when it comes to public utilities, and in many cases especially, National Grid, there's gotta come a point in this city, whether it's our own Department of Public Works that's overseeing it, you know, either more diligently or more effectively. But there's gotta come a point where work that's being done by National Grid, the cleanup work, the resurfacing efforts, have to improve because we're forever going down that road of, you know, you dig up the street. We know that it's done for a reason, you know, people need energy, people need heat, people need electricity. But when you leave the road in disrepair, it's our residents that are getting stuck with that shoddy workmanship. So there has to come a point, I don't know whether it's gonna be initiated from the City Council, from the administration, or from National Grid, but it needs definitely to improve. We just can't allow it to continue. We've got constant, you know, work will be done, they'll, you know, they'll resurface it, and the next thing you know, two weeks later, it's sinking in, and people are going over it, and it's damaging vehicles. It's just, it's not right, it's not fair to the residents. So I'm hoping that's a discussion for another time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a fairly good discussion, I think, in the Public Works Subcommittee tonight, and we did address just that, that, you know, we don't want to hold up projects, but we also want more cooperation. And the cooperation is of your subcontractors mostly. I think that if I was a judge of what's going on here, I think, and I don't want to name any of them, but some of the subs have dropped the ball. I'm not saying they dropped the ball on the compaction. I suspect that, but I'm not gonna accuse that. But there's been, there's been, like my colleague to my right said, there's been a lot of disrepair. And there needs to be disrepair when you're digging up streets. But there's a good way to do it and a bad way to do it. I spent my life in construction, and I know that both things can be achieved. And we've kind of gone off the rail a little bit, and I think that everybody at National Grid knows the way this council feels now, and we want to try to make this work so we don't have to hold up any projects because the last thing we want to do is hold up homeowners and developers and hold up progress because of ill feelings. So if we can make it work, I think we can, and so that's where I am with this. So I'm obviously in support of this and the other one that's up tonight, but we do need to keep in mind, as my colleague to my right said, that, you know, that the councillors are upset. And why are the councillors upset? Because the neighbors are upset. And, you know, it's just, it snowballs, and you don't want to, we try to, we try to make these projects go forward in a smooth way, and we gotta all cooperate, and we gotta be conscious. And if it means grabbing a subcontractor and threatening them, that's what National Grid has to do.
Well, if you ask me, I'll simply say, if we can get a contact from probably the Public Works and a liaison officer from National Grid, if we work amicably, I believe this process will work, you know, go through seamlessly rather than it gets into this point. We have someone available who can, you know, talk to us.
Yeah, we need to communicate a little better than we have been. But it looks like we're on the right track now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We talked earlier in the.
We talked earlier in the Subcommittee this evening, and, of course, one of the issues that I brought up was a, what I consider to be very dangerous and life-threatening to the residents and even the non-residents coming through our city. And I hope, I'm going to support this tonight, but I hope, and this is my last time, I hope that in the future, within a very short period of time, that issue will be addressed by National Grid. They have a responsibility and obligation. Thank you, sir. And the other thing Councilor Rizzo mentioned was the roadways, okay, as did Councilor Zambudo, and the compaction is not being properly by subcontractors. And I think it's incumbent upon National Grid to have somebody that will go out when they open up a road for to put in some line or something, make sure, because, you know, we're in a city, a lot of the city is in an area that is prone to flooding, and the, particularly the area I represent. And when, if they're not compacted properly, it sinks an inch, two inches, three inches, and you have people bottoming out with their cars, et cetera, going over those things. Recently, we have a guy running the superintendent's office down there, Don Chamela, he, they did a water line in an area that I represent, it hasn't sunk an eighth of an inch. So, our guys are out there doing the job, and I think it's incumbent upon National Grid to make sure that the subcontractors are doing their job. Whether or not they have to put on somebody to do inspections, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but I know it has to change. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Powers. Okay. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to touch on one more thing, we learned earlier today from one of your colleagues, sir, that in the contract for the subcontractors, they're not to be leaving materials, vehicles, anything overnight to leave a clean, excuse me, works.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
If I-
Councilor Keith.
Just, what Councilor Cogliandro was trying to say was, the, mostly the machinery is what causes a lot of grief in the neighborhoods, especially with tight parking, is when a subcontractor comes out to repair an area, to dig up a road, they're to take the machinery with them and then return it in the morning, early night, or whenever the work's being done. They shouldn't be leaving it and taking up ten, five, two. Most streets can't afford to lose three, four spots. People come home from work, and then they have nowhere to park. So, I know that this was a problem for me on Yeman Street recently, and, not Yeman's, pardon me, Fernwood, and every night, I was contacting the city, the DPW, et cetera, to tell them to move their equipment. We have a school lot, they could probably talk to the school and say, hey, can we use a few spots? Things like that, common sense, that's what Councilor, Councilor Cogliandro is trying to get at.
Thank you, Councilor Keith.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe just, one other thing, just to clarify.
Sure.
Okay, National Grid, there's electric and also the gas side, so I will try as much as possible to pass information across to the, you know, community liaison officer to see how best they can handle issues like this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Moses. No other questions? We'll take a roll call on this.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid to construct a line of underground conduits, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures with the plan on file for Marshall Street? Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted. Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee report.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the Subcommittee and Public Works met earlier tonight on two particular issues from National Grid, and, you know, one of the main reasons that I had them put in Public Works was exactly what everybody's talking about tonight, the complaints that they were getting from our constituents, and all the calls we made to National Grid at the time were for naught. Nobody would listen to us. And even two years ago, or three years ago, we put a moratorium on the books where they couldn't do any more digging in Revere for a period of six months, to let them catch up, or make them catch up with a lot of the stuff that was, what we're talking about today. And I'm not short of doing it again, if everybody feels comfortable of what they're, you know, the way they're doing their work. But the two items that we worked on today was Council Order twenty-two two seventy-two, and it was the relocation of a pole on the corner of Campbell Ave and Revere Beach Parkway. And we discussed that, and the recommendation was to come out in favor of this request. That's one.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid to relocate pole number fifteen seventy-six further back on the sidewalk on Campbell Ave near the intersection of Revere Beach Parkway? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, that petition has been granted.
Thank you, and your next order was twenty-two dash zero nine one, a petition by National Grid to install underground electrical conduit, conduit to pole fifteen seventy-seven on Campbell Ave at the intersection of Revere Beach Parkway. Now, I want, just, if I may, before we go any further, I want to make sure that when they do that underground, that they replace concrete for concrete when they, when they do that, John, if you want to talk about it. And I know they were also moving a pole, so we just want to make sure that they come back and do it in a timely fashion, rather than making us wait a year or two. John?
Hi, my name's John Castro, National Grid, located at one seventy Metford Street in Malden, and yes, we will absolutely replace in kind, concrete sidewalk for concrete sidewalk, and transfer the pole as quickly as possible, yes. With that said, unfortunately, we're not the only ones on the pole, so, but we will do our best to make sure that pole doesn't stay there any longer than it needs to be.
Understood, thank you. So, the committee voted to recommend favorable viewing on this, and call for a roll call.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the petition of National Grid to install an underground electrical conduit to pole number fifteen seventy-seven on Campbell Ave near the intersection of Revere Beach Parkway? Councilor Cogliandro.
Is absent.
Is absent. Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the petition has been granted.
Go ahead.
Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Voting yes. The petition has been granted. Next up is the zoning Subcommittee report.
Councilor Keith.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we had one item in front of the zoning Subcommittee. This item was regarding a project on Mount Tenav. This was voted on with no resistance from the residents. It was, all residents that came in favor were in favor, there was none not in favor, both tonight and at the public hearing. This was voted unfavorably by the zoning Subcommittee. Thank you.
Any other questions?
With conditions.
Yes. Any questions from the council? No? Hearing and seeing none, roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant, subject to the findings and conditions for three fifty-five Mountain Avenue? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
No.
No, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Next up is Communications. Communication from Parks and Recreation Director Mike Inahosa relative to the named dedication for Harry Del Russo basketball courts in honor of Robert Ace McCarrick.
Okay. We have anybody here to speak on that behalf? Okay. Councilor Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. I know my, Mr. Hinoz had sent a letter to the council, to the clerk regarding this, and I believe he did go through the mayor's office and got, and received approval. I'd been approached by a few people hearing that this was coming, including Mr. DeGiulio, former coach and employee of Revere, just suggesting, I don't know Mr. McCarrick, but I know that some of the legacy that he was a long-term, longtime coach specifically, did a lot with the Parks League outside on the former courts, and thought that this was a very fitting tribute to Mr. McCarrick, so that's really what I got from this. Thank you.
Councilor Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I did know Bob McCarrick, and he was an ace guy, and he, he did every sport, he was a referee and a player, and he just did everything that was right for the citizens of Revere, and I think this is a great commendation for him to make this happen, and I'm in favor of it, and I look forward to it happening. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think everybody that knew Ace loved him, and this is a, this is a wonderful tribute.
Okay. Councilor-
So, I obviously support it.
Councilor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I had the opportunity and the pleasure of working side by side with Bob McCarrick for a period of twenty-three years, and I can tell you now with a strong degree of certainty that there was no one that I know of that put more effort and into his position down there. You would find him at the former Hill Park every night, down there, refereeing basketball games, just someone that really took his job very seriously and certainly deserves this honor of this award. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no objection, we can take a roll call on this.
Shall the City Council approve the naming of the basketball courts at Harry Del Russo Stadium after Robert Ace McCarrick? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the motion's been approved. Calendar item number thirteen, communication from the City Auditor requesting an appropriation from the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice.
Good evening, councilors. Rich Viskey, twenty-one Broadway. You're probably used to this appropriation by now. We receive those dollars. It's by Mass General Law Receipt Reserve for appropriation by this body, and once you approve the appropriation, we send it along to the cable access television, so happy to answer any questions otherwise.
Can we all sit with this? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve an appropriation for the Cable Access Receipt Reserve Fund in the amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred, sixty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents for the purpose of paying Revere TV's quarterly invoice? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number fourteen, communication from the City Auditor relative to the establishment of, of the opioid recovery and remediation trust fund.
Hello, good evening again. Just to give you a brief summary, I did include it in the packet, but the city of Revere is entitled to over a million dollars worth of the opioid settlement case through soon-to-be Governor Haley's Attorney General's Office, and those funds by law are not allowed to be put into a special revenue fund. They would be general fund revenues that would close right out to free cash unless we otherwise set up a means to put those dollars in a special account to then be appropriated for the proper use, so the idea is to create a stabilization fund, because these dollars are going to come in over the next fifteen years or so, and with the stabilization fund, it's two-thirds appropriation out of that fund by the council for the appropriate uses of that. The interest gets to stay within the fund, so if there's an accumulation of funds, interest will maintain within the fund, and, and basically, we want to make sure that that money doesn't just close out to free cash and is spent arbitrarily, we want to make sure it's used for the intended purpose, so we feel like the best use is to set up a stabilization fund for those funds and then bring it before the body whenever we need to appropriate it for such means, so happy to answer any questions on that in particular. Again, chapter forty, section five B allows us to set up stabilization funds for multiple purposes, so upon vote of the establishment of that, we'll make sure that those dollars are sent to that particular fund.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Sure. Just, just one quick question, just so I understand. You said it will require a two-thirds vote from the City Council to release any, any funds from the stabilization fund to be spent on whatever the request is, correct?
Yeah, when we set up the fund, I have to set up the appropriate use of it, which is part of the language, and anytime we use those funds, any stabilization fund requires two-thirds vote of the City Council.
Okay, so this is no different than any other, you know, water, sewer, free cash?
No, free cash is actually-
I'm sorry, not free cash.
-majority, but stable is any kind of like a reserve fund, a rainy day fund for water and sewer as well as general fund. Anything that's a trust fund is a two-thirds vote, but the free cash and the retained earnings is a majority vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
If there's no objection from the Chair of Ways and Means, we can vote on this tonight? Okay. Roll call.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, chapter forty, section five B, shall the City Council establish the opioid recovery and remediation trust fund? Councilor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna is absent. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the trust fund has been established.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the trust fund has been established. Calendar item number 15, communication from the city auditor relative to the appropriation reduction to set the tax rate for the Riviere Public Schools.
Thank you. This is a little bit unique. When we set the budget in fiscal year '23, we were anticipating covering the entire amount of student transportation for the Riviere Public Schools, which is a function of Schedule 19, which we do as an annual budget process. Superintendent Kelly is right there, and right at the last minute of the budget, we had some negotiation, and she agreed to help us with the million-dollar contribution from her ESA funds to reduce the cost of the city for that transportation. However, the appropriation order that you voted when we voted the budget had the old number, which was increased by a million dollars. So in order to submit a tax rate to the Department of Revenue for fiscal year '23, I'm just asking this body to reduce that appropriation by a million dollars. And again, superintendent's well aware of it, as is Matt Cruz and everybody else, so this is just a function of making sure I can submit a balanced tax rate to the DOR.
Any questions? Counselor Zambudo?
I discussed this with the CFO earlier, and he needs to vote on this tonight, and I agree to that.
We're going to vote on it.
That doesn't mean I agree to vote on everything that's going to Ways and Means tonight, but this one, we do need to vote on tonight in order to set the tax rate.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, too, for the contribution to the million dollars. I remember having those discussions with the mayor, and it's glad to see that we worked an agreement. So if there's no further questions, we'll vote on this. Roll call?
Shall the City Council reduce the appropriation for the fiscal year 2023 school department budget by $1 million? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the reduction has been approved.
Great. Thank you. Next?
Calendar item number 16, communication from the city auditor relative to the establishment of the Riviere High School Construction Trust Fund.
Good evening again. Much like we just voted on the opioid settlement trust fund, we are now trying to strategize on how we're going to build and afford the new Riviere High Schools. So in anticipation of that, I come before you to ask you to adopt a high school construction trust fund, and the adoption of that will allow me to set up the fund, and then I believe over the next several years, we're going to be strategizing about how we can put some investments into that trust fund to help out with that first spike of the first debt payment when construction is complete around 2028, 2029. So I don't want to get into too much of the financial forecasting of it, but the new growth that is anticipated to pay for the high school may take a little longer than that first debt payment coming along, so trying to create a stabilization fund and work with the mayor and City Council about maybe directing some direct revenue streams into that trust fund, the percentage of free cash, such things. We're getting a lot of high building permits for some of the construction. I don't want that to be all absorbed into the operating budget. We have to really plan accordingly to take on this debt service, so my first strategy is to create a stabilization fund for this high school and then try to get some money in there to kind of, you know, take the spike out of the, deblunt the spike when the debt service hits on this school. So this is doing nothing except establishing the fund, and then we'll try to figure out ways to get some money in there to try to assist in the construction of the new high school.
Okay. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is one that I do want to discuss in Ways and Means. I want to know how, I want to know a lot more of the details, so I'm not against it. I'm probably for it, but I want to know a lot of the particulars, and so I'd like to see this go to Ways and Means.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Rizzo, do you, any concerns with this?
No, not at all. I think it's smart planning, to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Okay. Is it the will of council to put it in Ways and Means or vote on this? The same one is, if there's no objection?
No, Mr. President, if I may, I, you know, we're not allocating any money tonight. We're simply giving you the authority to create the account.
To create the fund.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't think this, I think it's, I think it's definitely something that we could lay the groundwork for, and then as we start to develop a plan to fund it, then we can have these conversations in committee.
Yes. Yeah, sure, and just for Counselor Zambudo's benefit, the establishment of the fund doesn't set any policy about the revenues that go in and how they're going to be expended. It's just the ability for me to create it, but I will add that there's no rush to do it either.
So, no, no, it's okay. So if the caveat is that we can set the rules after we vote for you to appropriate.
This is just to set the.
Yeah, this is just to establish the fund.
So just to establish the fund, but we'll work on the rules later. Okay, that's, I can.
Are you okay with that? We approved the last one.
That's fine. No, the last one was different.
Okay.
Okay, but, thank you.
Thank you.
Was the last one not different? We weren't, we weren't going to try to fund.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Time out, time out. Words mean something. The last one was the fund that we were going to get for.
The opioids.
The opioids is a different story.
They just setting up that.
That's money's going into the account. This is an account that we're going to try to create revenue to pay the debt on the high school.
Okay, so.
A big difference, I want everybody to know.
Can I have the floor now?
Just because I was against the high school going there, that's not my reason.
Counsel, can I have the floor?
Go ahead.
Okay, you spoke, okay? The last one was to set up the account, the same as this. It's to set up the account. That's it.
No, that's wrong.
Okay, thank you.
Set up the account so you could accept the million dollars from the federal government?
We still need to set up the account.
Okay, yes, okay, but it's.
Thank you, okay.
It's not apples to apples.
All right, if there's not any other objection, no objections, it's, let's take a roll call.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, shall the City Council establish the Riviere High School Construction Trust Fund? Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna is absent. Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselski?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counselor President Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, the fund has been established. Calendar item number 17, communication from the mayor relative to an update regarding the Riviere High School construction project.
Name and address.
Brian Dakin, One High Street. I work for Left Field. We are the owner's project manager for the high school project. And I'd like to take you through a little bit of a presentation today. First off, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight. We just wanted to give you an update on the high school project. There's no motions or votes associated with this, but we will be back in two weeks to finish off this update and hopefully finish the feasibility study phase. Next slide, please. I'll try to do this pretty quickly, but it could take about five, 10 minutes, just as a fair warning, but we're going to really briefly run through a design update, which I am going to admit I'm going to do fairly quickly, and we're going to spend a little more time on items two and three to actually go through the MSBA process and schedule that's going to unfold in the next number of months. Lastly, we'll just highlight some items that we'll cover at the next and subsequent City Council meetings. Next slide. We'll start with some site updates. We're going to work our way into the building. Next slide. So this is a slide showing the existing conditions down at the Wonderland property. To not bury the lead here, site access was secured in the last week, week and a half. Starting in earnest today, the project has consultants down on the site coordinating with some city engineers to do some initial survey work, geotechnical testing work, environmental testing work, that's going to really set up the development that we'll talk a little bit further about in terms of the design and the budget over the coming months, the future phases of this project. But for right now, I did want to note that we all know there's a lot of restrictions on this site, the probably biggest of which is the Eastern County ditch. That's the diagonal line running from about the top middle of the page down into the right, sort of bisects the site into two pieces. We also have the old track shown on the upper left and overlaid a bunch of easements, city utilities, and setbacks that we anticipate encountering in the MEPA process, the Mass Environmental Protection Agency approvals that will be required of this. So there's a lot of challenges on this site, but I wanted to assure the City Council that we're working with the city, city engineers, and even I'll be reaching out to Counselor Powers in the coming week or so just to start a dialogue about site logistics, impact to a butters, et cetera. We have some folks here from Consigli, who is your builder. They'll be working with us a lot to ensure that that's a safe site, and we have good communication with yourself, with other constituents and the butters down there. So I wanted to stress that we're really, even though we've been talking about this project for a handful of years, we're still really only at the conclusion of schematic design. So we have another year, year and a half's worth of design refinement and permitting. We'll talk a little bit about that later, but I did want to note we are on site, and we are moving forward with all the analysis required to turn the schematic ideas that are going to be in front of you tonight into a final buildable project. Next slide, please. This is the preferred and current site plan for the redevelopment of Wonderland into the high school, and I wanted to highlight a handful of things, one of which is again the Eastern County ditch that sort of defines and to some degree dominates a lot of the acreage of this site. You'll see that we're mostly looking to keep it intact. However, through the permitting process, we are going to see if we can return it to its natural riverbed path, which is not, believe it or not, an exact straight line through the site. We think there's some benefits there in terms of getting additional acreage that's usable on the site. You'll see that the ability to sort of push that ditch back into its natural state should yield a spot on the lower right of this plan that we're calling future municipal use. That really is going to be up to the city on how that, any leftover area on the site is able to be developed, but that gray square on that bottom right is currently not envisioned to be part of the high school development, other than permitting it, doing the demo, any soils abatement that's there, leveling it, and leaving it. However, if things we might learn in the permitting process could push that restoration of that river down the page, it could become a little smaller. So that's going to be one of these items that's in flux as we get through the permitting process. But generally speaking, what you're looking at here is in orange, the orange areas are areas that are structured underground. This building is going to be designed to have parking more or less at the grade level. In this scheme, which is the one that we would like to bring through the MEPA process, the building is tucked onto the high ground. It's part of the flood mitigation pieces of this design to put the building on the absolute highest piece of the site and to structure a garage below it. So plus or minus, the area that you're seeing sort of around the building in an orange would be subgrade parking, the grade, you'd walk right into the building on the first floor in the main entry that I'll show you a little bit later, but around the back of the building, upper left of the page is where cars could come and go into that surface parking at the back buried in the front. You're also seeing two fields here, a multi-sport field and a rectangular field. I'll go to a slide in a minute. You don't have to click yet, sorry, but this is the goal, to get these two fields in here. There might be some things we learn in the permitting process that change that. We'll talk about it in a minute, but otherwise, we're looking at site amenities, tennis courts, a whole lot of flood mitigation basins, and flood mitigation and drainage structures under the field to handle storm events and rain events. Next slide, please. I also wanted to debrief the council and the building committee. They're aware of this, that there's a good chance, there's a chance, I'm not even going to call it a good chance, I retract that, but there's a chance that through the MEPA permitting process, that old track loop might have become defined as a wetland. If in fact it is, we're not going to be able to develop on top of that. We're going to have to push the building a little bit down into the middle of the site, and we could have a limited encroachment on the drive exit. One item that I forgot to mention on the previous slide, both of these scenarios enter and exit via, from a vehicular point of view, to the two lit intersections on the adjacent roads and contain a whole lot of queuing onsite to route pickup, drop-off, and bus traffic through two separate loops of traffic and give a lot of space for onsite queuing to alleviate any additional backup out onto the street during pickup and drop-off hours. But in this scenario, which we might, we might end up finding, this is the direction we're going, it'll take probably into the middle of next year to get far enough down the permitting avenue to know if we're going to have to avoid that potential wetland up at the track loop. But as you can see, it sort of drops us down to one field, and it would ultimately eliminate the ability to have a significant parcel left over for future development or for other use by the city. But I did want to highlight this as somewhere the project might have to go based on environmental permitting. Next slide, please. We're going to talk a little bit about the exterior design. Next slide. And just one, I'm going to plug this twice tonight, just sort of as an ad more so for the folks at home, but all the slides you're looking at tonight have been recycled from other building committee meetings and presentations, and I would encourage the council and folks watching at home to visit the project website, rhsconstructionproject.com. There's a calendar in there, you can see upcoming meetings, agendas, download presentations, all of the milestone presentations we're sending the state will be on there. Any information that we come up with as we're digging into the site and design will get up there. So I'm going to go through the design stuff really quick. I'm not an architect, so if there are things that the council would like to hear more about or know more about, it's something that we can cover at a future meeting. We can have the architects attend as well. Next slide.
You just mentioned that there's a link to that site from the school website.
Correct, yep, that website, and we'll see it again in a minute, is accessible through the school website as well. There's a link to both of them. So just really quickly in concept, a lot of the images you're going to see in the inside and outside of this building are based on a sort of wave and ocean concept. A subcommittee of the building committee and a number of people in the school worked, school and the city in this building, worked with the designer to hone in from a number of concepts to one concept. This is a fairly strong concept that everyone really got behind and sort of defines a lot of the finishes and the feel of the building as we get into the, into design. Next slide, please. We're going to hit a few exterior renderings here that I'll just sort of describe to you what's going on, and I'd also just, again, like to stress, we're at schematic design here. There's going to be a year, year and a half of refinement of this design, working further with the city, further with the school folks, but what I can assure you is that we're focusing on durable materials, materials that tend towards high durability and low maintenance. On the exterior, it's going to be a lot of masonry. Right now, the design is to have different types of masonry, a base of darker material around the bottom of the building at the areas that are accessible, and a lighter masonry up above with a dark iron spot masonry around the window units. Next slide, please. This is a view into the main entry, so you would have come into the site and traversed a number of, a good length of roadways that'll have pickup and drop-off where sort of the black hole at the sort of center bottom left is the main entry. The wood-looking structure on the upper right is the auditorium. That's not actually wood. We're planning on it being phenolic panels, which are much more durable, longer lasting than wood. They can have a wood look. In front of that auditorium area is a music and arts spaces on the right side of that building, and you can see the four-story academic core of the building snaking by on the left. Next slide, please. One disclaimer I'll throw in now is that the site features are not rendered into these views yet. Again, we're early, we're in schematic design, but I can assure you that this isn't going to be a flat field of grass out in the courtyard of the building. There will be plenty of design elements that will engage students, provide outdoor learning spaces, and provide overflow space for what is basically the commons. That tall glass area in the center is the backside of the entry commons, which connects multiple floors of the building. The left of this is the backside of the athletic and gym spaces, and the right, again, is that four-story structure of the classroom wave going by. Next slide, please. This is just one more view now to, again, give a concept of where the design's going. This would be the view from the roadways and from Wonderland. You can see mostly masonry, glass curtain wall, and phenolic panel wood accents in some type of configuration. Again, what you're looking at here is not a final design, it's just where the concepts are going. Next slide, please. We'll jump into the interior. Next slide, again. This one will be quick because I'm plugging the website once again, again, linked from the school website. A lot of these materials, the reasons behind the materials, both from a design aesthetic point of view and a maintenance point of view, information can be found at the website. I encourage people to go check it out. Next slide. For the interiors, since this is really what a lot of the design development in the coming months will focus on, I'm really just going to run through the four or five technically floors of the building. This was the main level. We looked at a view a minute ago where I pointed out, I used the word, that black hole in the middle, that area is the main entry, that's the view number one that you were looking at, and on this level, you would come into a large open cafeteria in commons area flanked by the kitchen, and generally speaking, on the upper side of the page, on the right, if you were walking in the building, will be the art space, auditorium, and in the rectangle on the upper left, there'll be a stack of athletic program. On this first floor, all the JROTC space, locker rooms, et cetera, and you'll see that wave form of the building, the classrooms on the bottom, that's going to maintain its way all the way up. to maintain its way all the way up. That view in the courtyard is labeled view number two here. So as you can see, that exterior courtyard space is really going to engage the main heart of the school that exists at the middle here. Next slide. Moving up in the building, you'll see that that open space maintains itself all the way up through this building. There are some walkways and bridges, if you will, through it on the second floor. We have access to the auditorium at the top center of the page, arts and tech space on the right. And then the actual gymnasium, which is on the second floor, there'll be a large monumental staircase from the first floor up into the gymnasium. Gymnasium is designed to support indoor track. So even though this building does not have a field house, we've still been able to configure it in a way that indoor track events can occur in that gymnasium space in the adjacent spaces. And there's a ninth-grade cafeteria intended for the second floor. That was a big thing coming out of the educational programming of this building to give the incoming students perhaps a smaller, more, less grand, less mixed in with everyone space if they so chose to eat up there, eat up there, sorry. And you can see the same repetition of the classroom wave going by. Next. This is the third floor of the building, which again you can see we're still connecting through some, through some bridges and walkways to the media commons, which is basically, you know, the modern day sort of library, if you will. And we still have the form of the wave structure in classrooms and admin spaces going by on the bottom of the page. Next slide. The fourth floor is really just the wave area of the building, the academic wing of the building and with some roof access out towards the lower assembly areas of the building. Next slide. This is jumping down to underneath, so again, on the right side of this page, that'll all be buried, it'll be underground. All the, all the walkways and the roadways will rise up to the first floor entry, you'll walk straight into the building. If you were to drive around the back of the building, you would be at grade and able to get into this garage area. Right now, it's laid out with 333 parking spaces. The use of that, exactly who will be parking there, et cetera, is something that's going to be worked out with the school as we move forward, including how can it be used off hours, et cetera. Down on this level is also where the loading dock and receiving area is on the bottom center of the page here. Next slide. And we have a few schematic renderings of what that massive interior three, four-story space in that commons is going to look like. Down on the bottom, that's the distributed eating area and you see the monumental stairs that would be leading up to the gym area. And this is again, it's early, it's not a high degree of finish shown in these plans. These are really just concept renderings of what that interior space might look like. Next slide. This is another view looking out from the, one of the upper floors, one of those bridges I mentioned, back into the courtyard area that we saw rendering for earlier. Next slide. So this is sort of the meat and potatoes of what I wanted to update the council with tonight. Next slide. This is a bit busy here and I'm not going to walk you through all of this. If anyone has questions, feel free to reach out to me. Next slide. I'm going to highlight key dates that are on the previous slide. And this is really the process to complete the feasibility study and move right into a full design and construction project. So we started at 12:08. We went through a joint meeting of the school building committee and school committee to update design, go through schedule, effectively the items you're seeing tonight. And we're bringing that here tonight to review the scope side of the project and the schedule side. We'll get to this in a slide or two. We don't have numbers going yet. I'll show you, I'll show you why on the schedule. We do, we anticipate being back here in two weeks to present the results of the schematic design estimating process and to ask the city council to approve the completion of schematic design. And I want to, that's something we're going to talk about again in a minute. It's not approving the design, the design's not done. It's not approving a final schedule, the schedule's going to evolve. It's not approving a final number. The estimates are going to involve, evolve as we continue to estimate it through some phases, I'll show you in a minute. But what this process does is cap the schematic design off at what we consider to be a not-to-exceed budget associated with a schedule. So what we're going to be asking you for in a few weeks is to approve completion of schematic design. That's going to have a schedule attached to it, it will have a number attached to it, but that number is going to continue to evolve as we move forward. Ultimately, we owe the MSBA warning that the submission is going to come by December 14th and we owe them the submission itself by December 28th. We have no more time left on that clock. That is the point that we have to get this into them. They will then spend January and February reviewing the submission. The submission that we put in front of you and the numbers we put in front of you in a few weeks will include our best assumptions on reimbursement from the state. In January and February, their homework will verify those numbers and they'll come back to the city after board approval out on March 1st with what's called a project scope and budget agreement. To make a quick comparison, the project scope and budget is almost like a purchase and sale point, if you're familiar with buying a house. But they'll take the not-to-exceed budget that we set, they will verify what their contribution will be and they'll make the city a formal offer via the project scope and budget agreement that at that point will set a budget cap, a reimbursement cap that we can move forward with. I do just want to stress, as I've said before, it's going, the budget is going to continue to evolve. We don't want it to go over the numbers that you will see in two weeks, but we will keep estimating, we'll keep designing. If there are budget goals that come up in the next number of months, we'll work to meet them in future phases of the project. So ultimately, in March after that, MSBA Board of Directors, March 1st approves the schematic design submission, they will issue a project scope and budget agreement within two weeks. We'll analyze that project scope and budget agreement, we'll present it to the school building committee, to the school committee, and we'll bring it to the council to present it. That sets up ultimately what the, the bond authorization, the borrowing authorization meetings will be. These are estimated dates, end of March after we receive the project scope and budget offer back from the MSBA. That's the point at which we can move forward with a funded project. So next slide, I'm going to now just describe and click forward once more, please, one more slide. Now I'm going to look at how this all ties into the greater project schedule. And right now, I know this is small, but we'll click forward and it'll zoom in, I'll break this into two parts. So this is the, the portion that we're in right now is you can basically look to the green dashed vertical line, site access. We've secured site access, we're finishing schematic design, that top bar. And that schematic design will set up MSBA approval into March and a, that next purple bar down, funding the project, that's one of the MSBA modules that they describe it as. That's when that offer comes back to the city. The city uses that offer to set up a borrowing limit with an understanding of how much the MSBA is going to contribute. Jumping down to the next sort of orange peach looking bar, we need to keep the project rolling forward. We need to go from schematic design right into design development. Since we just got consultants onsite in the last few weeks, we're going to be making as many assumptions as we can for the prices we put in front of you in two weeks, but a lot of that data is going to take into December and January and February to roll in and to really mull over with the team and to get the most efficient version specifically as it relates to development of that site, redevelopment of that site, cleanup of that site, how to handle soils. So when I said earlier that the, the estimates and the price will continue to evolve, that's what that third bar down is sort of showing you there. At the end of the, it says DD, that means design development. The end of that phase, we'll do another series of estimates, we'll bring those estimates back to everyone, we'll update the state, we'll then move on to 60% construction documents. The end of that phase, we'll have additional estimating. There's a 90% construction documents phase, additional estimates. And you can see that that all sort of, sort of bleeds itself out to, we're not bidding out the project really until 2024. We'll look to stagger these bids. The first scope that we'd like to be able to bid is late next year into 2024 and it's basically just site prep. We'd like to be able to mobilize with a site contractor, perhaps underground utility contractors, electrical, et cetera, and be ready to get in the ground in spring 2024 to get that site demolished, everything that's under grade, and start all of the site work we need to reroute that Eastern County ditch and remove any potentially hazardous materials. So I, the point I really wanted to make here is that despite the project seeking a schematic design approval, again, with a number and a schedule attached in a few weeks, that number is going to continue to evolve. I've, we'll stay, we'll talk about it in a minute, that nothing really good has happened in the last two years as far as pricing of projects, especially of this magnitude. However, there's some hope between some folks on the team that in this calendar that you're looking at here, the construction market should hopefully start leveling out and it might end up being a blessing in disguise in that we are still estimating right now at what is a historic high in the market. And if we see the recovery that we hope for through 2023 and into 2024, we should have a good time definitely being able to live within the schematic design budget and hopefully better it by a good deal by the time we're out and we actually have to bid the project. This always means that usually that despite a debt authorization up to a certain number, the borrowing most likely, this is Rich's job, not mine, but the bomb, the borrowing will most likely be broken out into phases. We'll probably only be looking to actually bond site work and then finish the 60 and 90% estimates and then know exactly what needs to be bonded for the rest of the project. So we can do that all in phases and that really allows us to meet any budget goals that come along. Next slide, please. This again just tails out to completion in summer of 2027. So we're confident that if we can hold this schedule, we'll have kids in the building for September 2027. We have a good runway, as I like to think of it, in spring where consigly will be done with the building, we'll get occupancy permits, and then we'll have a couple of months to move all the technology, new furniture into the building, do a staff move of all staff items, straddling that summer when they go home. We'll be ready to take everything out of the building their last day of school and it'll be where it needs to be, first day of school when they all return. That also gives us a good amount of time to get staff in there if they so choose at the end of that summer. And the project then will stretch out for a little after occupancy. We have to wait 10 months and then do a 10-month post-occupancy survey, complete that, and then do the audit with the MSBA. Next slide. The second to last thing I want to highlight is that purple bar that I skipped before, the permitting process. That's something that we're going to get underway ASAP in January. And it's mainly because this site is going to be under the jurisdiction of MIPA in addition to all the local permits that we need. In that MIPA process, we're estimating at a 12- to 14-month duration to get permits. We think we can get it far enough along to start site demolition and site work in concert with that early bid and site prep line you see there. So some of the, we might not have every permit, all the local permits, et cetera, before that because we're not building foundations yet, we're not building the superstructure yet, but we hope to be far enough along in the MIPA process to be able to get that shovel in the ground in 2024. I think the majority of the local permits will probably be queued off that 90% construction documents set and most of those local permitting processes will be things we go through in spring 2024 or late winter 2024. Next slide, please. We're almost there. One more, one more click. Thank you. The last big item we haven't talked about is the budget. And I did want to, because I didn't, I didn't really want to show up with nothing on the budget and just say that we're, we're in the process of doing the estimates, but I wanted to sort of queue up the range we're going to be in here. The completion of the last phase, the Wonderland option without land acquisition was in that $390 million range. We estimated about $154 million grant from the MSBA, which put the cost to Revere at about $236 million. We have begun estimating, we, we have been doing it for about three weeks now and that's all leading up to December 6th, which is an internal deadline for us, the team, to have the three different estimators working on this project, all have reconciled estimates, all apples to apples. We are going to use consigly, the builder's estimate, to set the actual project budget. We're going to be doing that overnight into the 7th and present it to the building committee and the school committee on December 8th. So December 8th is when the school committee, building committee will be getting numbers. That's probably the day that I will be able to send the numbers to you folks. So that's as early as we can get them to you. The city council meeting, I know, is only a few days later, but I did want to stress that if there are budget goals that come up, we have the design development phase to achieve those, 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 those values. Our, our recommendation is to move forward with submission of the schematic design package to MSBA to keep the train rolling down the tracks here. That sets up the December 14th. We have to tell MSBA it's coming, we have to tell them the number, two weeks in advance of the 28th, which is the deadline that we have to get the submission into them. That all, as I said before, sets up an actual borrowing authorization out in late March, potentially early April. And not to end on bad news, but I think this is something we've talked about a little bit before. But the cost that we presented last year, I can assure you, when we present it in two weeks, is going to be higher than a total project budget of $391 million. That's mostly driven by extraordinary market escalation in construction that continued to go above and beyond what all estimators in my industry were previewing through the early, through the first few years of COVID. So these numbers at the bottom are not real numbers. I just wanted to like have people have a frame of reference for if we miss that last estimate by 20%, that becomes a $470 million total project. If we missed it by 25, it could become a 489, 490. We will be running updated simulations, if you will, on what the MSBA grant will be. We will break this down into a cost, but I did want the council to understand that a larger number than $392 million will be coming. And unfortunately, on that bummer of a note, I will turn it over for, for questions and other items and assure the council that we'll be back with an update on project costs in two weeks.
Just one thing I wanted to add on the budget piece, and I think I mentioned this last time I was here with you all, but the MSBA has put a pause on all accelerated repair projects. So those are the projects that you've helped us with, you know, to do the new boilers at the Beachmont School, the new windows that we're working on for the Lincoln School, the new roof at the Garfield, all of those accelerated repair projects. They paused them all this year and have, and they're voting at their December meeting, the same one, the 28th that Brian's talking about. We have to let them know that we're ready to proceed at that meeting. But they're, they're going to be voting at that meeting to take those funds that had been allocated for accelerated repair, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to put toward offsetting these costs that projects that are in the core program, which is what this new building is called, because they're recognizing that this is a problem statewide and that towns, cities, and municipalities just can't afford to pay these exorbitant increases that, that we're seeing in the construction field. So more will come on that soon too, but as Brian said, you know, we're looking at numbers right now so that we can approve the schematic design submittal, which is necessary in order for us to proceed, but we're not actually approving numbers right now. And I do hope that in the next few months, at least that piece with MSBA will become clearer. I know there's also work at the State House with the legislature around creating additional funding streams to help with these projects as well. So I think all of that is, we'll, we'll know more about that in the next few months.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Let's, Councilor Beato.
Through you, Mr. President, to Dr. Kelly, since you brought up the conversation. So some of these issues that other schools are facing, they've been decade-long issues. So it's not as it, I know you're calling it an accelerated program, but we should have put money away little by little to start saving to fix these issues.
So our accelerated repair projects are in process.
They are in process.
They are, we are all set. It's, so every, every municipality in the Commonwealth is invited to submit project proposals to the MSBA. We have done that faithfully every year since before I was superintendent, you know, when we needed to do things. So we are in really good shape, but there were a number of municipalities, Revere was not one of them, who had submitted accelerated repair proposals this year. And MSBA recently said, we're putting a freeze on them, we're not going to fund any of those projects because we have this other funding issue that we're dealing with around core programs. And that's where we come into play. So their decision actually benefits us in this case.
So it does, okay.
Okay. Councilor Powell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just, I just have two issues I'd like to get out there tonight. And I understand the property down there is approximately 33 acres, give or take an My question would be, how much of that acreage do we anticipate will be dedicated toward the high school and the, the high school complex in general? I know one of the things that I've been advocating for several years now is, and this would be to reduce traffic on 1A also, would be a commuter rail station going directly over to the Blue Line. And I know that Congresswoman Catherine Clark has just recently obtained, I believe, $4 million for design of that. And then I know there's another issue out there, and I've spoken to the fire chief regarding this. He has been looking toward moving Engine 5 out of his current location down there, giving it better access. it better access to the city in general. And these are two things I, you know, when the design, the final design is being made as to the space allocated for the high school, I'd like to just have them have this information out there.
Sure. I think it really, right now, I can't get, give a definitive answer. It's because the permitting process with the state is going to define how much of that site is usable now and how much of it isn't. If we win some battles through that process, there will be space left over. I think it would be somewhere in the realm of probably four to six, maybe a little more acres that the high school program would not need, which could certainly sustain some of the type, some of the type projects you're talking about separately, regardless of how that works out. We have heard the commuter rail, there's potential for a commuter rail stop, and we will be reaching out to those teams to see if some of their early schematic design can align with ours in terms of where roadways are, what area they need. But if we go through the state permitting process and we, we do learn that there's, the track has turned into a wetland, and there's more wetlands than we think, that probability of having four, five, six acres left over is going to be reduced, and the project would lose a field. So the real answer is, is going to be one that we won't be able to find out till we get into it with Mass EPA and have them agree or disagree with the project's ideas about extensive wetlands where we can and can't develop. But our goal is to develop it such that there's space left over.
If I may, Mr. President, I think there's going to be a, ultimately, a tremendous cost with regard to the Eastern County ditch. That Eastern County ditch goes under North Shore Road, it goes all the way down to Arcadia Street, and then goes out under North Shore Road again, out to the B&M tracks to a pump station out there. So I think this is an issue that's going to be very costly, I anticipate. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for edification purposes, Dr. Kelly, did you say that the freeze, help me understand this, the freeze that's being put on by MSBA, we are not affected by that in terms of the work that's being done on the other buildings in the, in the city, correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct. These were new projects submitted by municipalities.
Okay, outside of the city?
We didn't have any new projects put in this year.
Okay, so where that freeze comes, does that money get distributed more to core programs like that?
So what we understand, and we'll know better after their meeting on the 28th, because the board, the MSBA board, will actually discuss this, but what we are understanding is the reason they put that freeze in place for this year's accelerated repair program was so that those funds could be applied toward existing core programs, which is what our high school is, our new high school. So core programs are either major renovations or brand-new buildings out of the ground, and our, our understanding is the state has recognized the challenge that these increases in costs have created for municipalities, and this is one of the steps that they've taken to try to remediate that.
So which would in turn mean that maybe an increase from the, the federal government?
From the state, yeah.
From the state, I'm sorry. From the state. Is that?
Yeah, that's the potential.
Okay.
That's what we're hopeful for, you know, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing and seeing none. I don't believe there's a vote needed on this, so we're just going to place this on file. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dakin, for that, that information. Thank you.
Calendar item number 18, communication from the mayor relative to the December 2022 holiday free parking period.
Motion to approve, Ms. President?
Great. If there's no objection, motion to approve, we'll take a roll call.
Shall the City Council approve of no parking meter enforcement on December 3rd, 11th, and 17th? Council Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Council Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna is absent. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, that motion has been approved. Calendar item number 19, communication from the mayor relative to the Toys for Tickets Amnesty Program for the 2022 holiday season.
Motion to approve? Great. Roll call?
Upon payment of an unpaid parking fine and the donation of a new unused toy of similar or greater value for donation to a worthy charitable purpose, the parking director, beginning on November 29th and ending at the close of business on December 16th, shall waive up to $30 per ticket, maximum five tickets and unpaid parking fines, as provided in Section 10.48.160, the revised ordinances. Notwithstanding the foregoing, the parking director shall not waive any surcharge imposed by the RMV if the parking director has notified the RMV of an unpaid fine and a non-runual notice and/or registration has been recorded by the RMV. Council Cogliandro.
Council?
Yes.
Yes, Council Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna is absent. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, excuse me, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved. Calendar item number 20, communication from the city auditor relative to the police superior, the, I'm sorry, police officer's Superior Memorandum of Agreement.
Good evening, council. And before you, to ask for your approval to fund the Superior Officers' Contract, which we've recently come to a memorandum of agreement on, it's a three-year contract that's retroactive to fiscal year '22, so it covers '22, '23, and '24. You have the executive summary of the MOA before you, and happy to answer any questions, but before we can execute, we would need your approval for funding. Thank you.
Motion to approve? Roll call? You have a, no, Council Cogliandro? Okay, great.
Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 150E, Section 7, shall the City Council approve the appropriation necessary to fund the Memorandum of Agreement between the City of Revere and the Revere Police Superior Officers' Association, covering the period between June 1st, 21, through June 30th, 24? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna is absent. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, the appropriation has been approved. Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Councilors Morabito and Silvestri that the City Council awards certificates of commendation to the Revere Papua Honor 12 U Patriots for winning the Eastern Massachusetts D2 championship.
Council Morabito?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, during the pandemic, sports went on a hiatus for months as people cocooned themselves in their house in the city throughout the world. So tonight, when we gave an award to the Revere High School volleyball team, and we're seeing sports back in action, it's great to see Revere back on top, and it's only proper to give these teams the recognition they deserve after two years of not competing and just not having a full schedule. So it, it is my pleasure to give the Papua Honor 12 U Revere Patriots team a certificate along with my colleague, and I don't know if Council Silvestri would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just support the motion as well, and like Council Morabito stated, sports are a pillar of the community, as always, and the kids go about their day, and very rarely are, are teams recognized by, by local municipalities such as us, and, and us doing so is, is a pretty big moment for them, and, and I.
Thank you. Thank you, council. All in favor? Any other questions? No comments? All in favor, all oppose? So ordered.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Council Rizzo that the City Council approve the following special legislation in Act repealing Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
Council Rizzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This special act was submitted presumably by the Revere City Council back in 1965. To give you an idea, Council Powers', good friend Endicott Peabody was governor, and John McCormick was the Speaker of the House. So, so this has been on the books in Massachusetts for 57 years, and I understand the reason why they probably did it back then. We were, it's a, it's a special act, so other communities hadn't adopted it, and Revere wanted to be as open as they possibly could and have people be able to speak on issues that came up before the City Council and, and boards and commissions. But now, as time has gone along, you know, Revere is still kind of standing out there alone with this special act, and now with the onset of Zoom meetings and things like that, that this City Council, I was not a part of it, but because, as, as Council Morabito had alluded, had alluded to earlier, the pandemic, and you guys had to meet by Zoom, that was just the protocols back then, and, but it's something now that, whether it's in private business or certainly in public entities like the City Council, that they're implementing more and more, that you're able to join in, like there was a school building committee that we, we had not too long ago that we could Zoom in on, and, and, you know, so it's becoming more and more prevalent, as we all know. So by repealing this act, it's going to give the council president, along with the chairpersons of boards and commission, the ability to control the meetings better. If you put it out there to the world on Zoom, it's not the same as people showing up in the council chambers and wanting to speak on something. You put it out there before thousands of people, you never get through a meeting. So this is almost, it's almost a motion, it's almost a housekeeping type of motion, because it just makes, it just makes sense in this day and age, and in this world, we're no longer in 1965, we're in 2022. So when the city clerk explained it to us last week, when Ashley explained it to all of us, you know, basically why, you know, we could not, you know, let's say, for example, you know, we've had some counselors that have been out from time to time, but maybe able to actually get on and participate in the meeting, you know, and perform their duties, they haven't been able to because of, because of this provision. By repealing this provision, we'll now be able to do that and actually get more participation, hopefully, from members of the boards, commissions, city council, and so on. So I thought it was a good suggestion, and that's why I went forward with the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. And any comments from the council? Council Silvestri?
Mr. President, thank you. I just wanted to say I support this because in two instances, you know, we, as a city council, we are kind of, I don't want to say stuck in our, in our old ways of doing things, but in the age of Zoom and in the age of telecommunications, where the state has given communities the power to have and hold remote public meetings, it's, it's kind of crazy that I, I did miss two meetings, I, I've only missed two meetings in my entire three years as a city councilor, and during both of those meetings, one was in December of 2021, where I was flying home, and I was on JetBlue, and I had Wi-Fi, and I was watching the meeting on YouTube, and I was texting the city clerk saying, you know, I would like to vote. Can I vote? I'm following along, but because of special rules and stuff, we couldn't, I, I could not vote remotely. And similarly, at the last meeting of October 24th, I think, or no, it may have been the 24th of October, I was away out of the country, six hours ahead in Europe, and I was going to bed, listening to the meeting and following along, and it was just asinine that I could be hearing, you know, Council Serino absent, and even though I was physically absent, I was still kind of here in spirit because I was, you know, following along with the meeting. So this, you know, I think allowing, repealing this special act will allow for the use of Zoom, and, you know, in, in the off-chance that we happen to be out, we can still participate and perform our duties, which, you know, the legislature votes remotely, the US Congress votes by proxy. This is not, you know, I think post-COVID, we are entering a new, you know, a new era, and I think we should embrace the technology to allow us to do that. So thank you, Mr. President.
Well, that's, that's, that's dedication. Out of the country, listening to the council meeting.
Mr. President, I will say.
I wish he could have voted.
None of you, hearing, I had my AirPods in, none of you are David Allen Boucher to kind of, your voices do not, you know.
I didn't think so. Uh, Council Zambudo?
I just want to say I support the motion. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing and seeing none. If we can do a suspension of rules, if there's no objection, and we vote on this this evening, on the special legislation. All right, roll call?
Shall the City Council approve an act repealing Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965? Council Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Council Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna is absent. Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rizzo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Serino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Fiscondi?
Yes.
Yes, the special legislation has been approved.
Okay. Moving on.
Motion, I'm sorry, calendar item number 23, motion presented by Councilors Keefe, Novoselsky, and Powers, that the mayor request an MBTA rep to provide the City Council with an update on proposed bus route and bus stop changes in the City of Revere, specifically proposed changes that will adversely impact our senior population. Council Zambudo has recused from this motion.
Council Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I probably speak on behalf of the entire City Council. There's been a lot of scuttlebutt in regards to what's going on with some of the bus route changes in the city, specifically the 411 that impacts some of our more vulnerable residents and some of our senior population that rely heavily on this. And, and, you know, it's, it's the MBTA taking the all-business route when it comes to public transportation in our city, but yet when they want to use a bus lane that goes, stretches the entire boundary of Broadway, that you have hundreds of cars drive up and down Broadway every 15 minutes, and you have two buses, and they take up, they take up half the street, it's ridiculous. So we constantly, they're coming and asking us for what they're going to do and telling us what they're going to do, and then again, they take this business route and say, oh, not enough riders to take, using this stop, let's move, let's move everything down one or two, and just completely eliminate it. That, that, this bus is vital to number of residents in that neighborhood, the Jack Satter residence specifically, and they use it a lot. It may not show in the numbers because it may not be as popular as a bus route on Broadway or on Shirley Ave or whatever it may be, not Shirley Ave, but I think everyone gets my point. I think it's ridiculous, and I think we need to stand up to the MBTA for trying to change this. I know that Council Powers, Council Novoselsky, like I said, I can't imagine anyone on the council not, not agreeing with this, but enough's enough. I mean, we can't just keep bending over and letting, letting them impact our residents this way. They are supposed to be a public service entity that's helping. These people need the bus. They need it. It's simple as that. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting at the Jack Satter House, right at the bus station, the bus stop down there, and there were probably 50 people that attended that meeting right from that building. And, you know, to force those people, many of them have handicap equipment, like a walker or a cane or something like that, to walk all the way down to North Shore Road, and then on top of it, cross North Shore Road to the convenience store, where we've had three fatalities in the past 20 years, and numerous, I say numerous, I mean numerous accidents down there on North Shore Road. So I think that's completely ridiculous, and I think that's something that the MBTA really has to look at very closely, particularly in that area. Thank you, Mr. President. And by the way, Council Novoselsky is with me down there at that meeting. Thank you.
Council Novoselsky?
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President and to everybody else, I, I've been working on an issue at the 411 on Oak Island Street for the last six months, and Council Powers and I have been disgusted the way the MBTA has been treating our people. And I say "our" people, citywide. They've already eliminated all the bus stops along Ocean Avenue. They've already eliminated all the bus stops along Ocean Avenue up to Beach Street and one on Beach Street at the corner of North Shore Road. And they expect people to walk an additional 1,500 feet or additional 800 feet to get to a bus stop that they want to redesign for their purposes, not for ours. They've never been good to us, we've been good to them, and they have not shown any respect for us. And I know Counselor Morbeto advised me today that, and I thank him for that, December 8th at 6 o'clock, there is a Zoom meeting, a public meeting for bus network redesign and fair and service equity analysis. It is a virtual event, and we'll get that out to the newspaper and everybody and what the event is, and we'll get everybody to register for it and let the MBTA know that we're not going to take it anymore. We want to do what we have to do to protect our folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. And just very briefly, I want to support this motion, of course. I mean, and one of the main buildings, although not the only one that's being impacted by these proposed changes, is the Jack Satter House. And, you know, they've, you know, they've, you know, a lot of them there, as Counsel Powers and Counsel Keefe had alluded to, they've got certain disabilities that will certainly prevent them from being able to cross North Shore Road at any hours, not just during peak hours, at any hours. The City of Revere pays an awful lot of money to the MBTA. I mean, we pay the MBTA to help support them. But yet, they seem to dictate everything that they do when it comes to bus routes, when it comes to bus lanes. I mean, just look, we're talking about the Jack Satter House. Look at the condition of the bus stop there. That just, it just sits there on and on and on, and they don't seem to care. You know, no matter who calls, no matter how many times you call, you cannot get any satisfaction from them to maintain their property. So it has got to a point, you know, I get sick to my stomach when I read the mainstream newspapers here in the Boston area about how they want to, you know, "We want free MBTA and free ridership." You know, start taking care, first of all, of what you have before you start making it free. And it's certainly not free to Revere taxpayers, because as I say, we pay an awful lot of money to support the MBTA. They're, you know, 100% support the motion, and, you know, let's just hope that we can get some results, certainly involving our state delegation as well, because I think they're going to be critical in this process. Unfortunately, it's been my experience over the years, the MBTA does not listen to the Revere City Council. It's just the reality of it. We can be, you know, we can be vocal, and we can support our residents, but at the end of the day, it's the legislature that controls the money and controls the budget, and they're going to have to be the ones that are going to have to intervene on our behalf to try to, you know, get results for our community.
I couldn't agree more. Maybe we should consider repealing that bus lane as well, so if they're not cooperating with us. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. Next motion?
Calendar item number 24, Motion Presented by Counselor Sorino that the mayor request a representative from National Grid to appear before the council to discuss the following outstanding request for items in Ward 6. Counsel Order 20-412, motion of Counselor Sorino that National Grid add streetlights to pole numbers 3960-50 and 3961-50 on Salem Street opposite Overlook Bridge Drive. Two, Counsel Order 21-281, motion of Counselor Sorino that National Grid install 96-watt street lamps on poles 3960, 3960 and a half, and 3961 on Salem Street in North Revere opposite the entrance to Overlook Bridge. And three, Counsel Order 22-041, motion of Counselor Sorino that National Grid install a street lamp on pole 2793 in front of 58 Carlson Avenue.
Counsel Sorino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, National Grid is not here right now, so I'll save most of my comments for when they do appear before us. But, you know, again, as I watched the last council meeting and listened to it, you know, hearing ward counselor by ward counselor, Novoselsky, McKenna, Cogliandro, all of you guys were expressing disgust essentially with National Grid. And I've had the same experience as a ward counselor. Actually, Counselor Novoselsky can back me up that two of the poles that I'm requesting lights on were actually poles on Salem Street in North Revere that the City Council denied having, when they, the City Council did not approve the poles that I'm actually now asking that our street lamps are to go on. They went ahead and they just added these poles without us. So they went ahead and added the poles, and then when the city councilor asked them to put street lamps on these poles, it just has gone totally ignored, and that particular request goes back to December of 2020. So again, I'll kind of go into more detail when they're before us, but suffice it to say that I would like some answers and hard deadlines of when we can expect these things to be accomplished. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to Counsel Sorino, my heart feels for you. Two years waiting is not a long time, unfortunately. I've been waiting four years since we put in the new lights in the city. There are lights they still have not changed over, and I've been working on those with National Grid folks with no respect. And, you know, and I don't necessarily blame, you know, Dan or Tammy, but it's their operations department that they have their own thing that they want to do first before they take care of us. And we're the bottom of the list as far as they're concerned. I'm not happy with it. I support you 1,000% on these, and as far as I'm concerned, anything more we can do to hurt them, we should.
Thank you, Mr. President. Requesting a representative doesn't guarantee that they're coming before the council. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And this is my problem, is I think, especially for the ward counselors, and no disrespect to the at-large guys, you guys work really hard as well. We can call them up here all we want, but they don't have to come up here. So how do we move forward? How do we put more pressure on National Grid to actually come before us and have these conversations? Because I'm fed up, you know, they walk all over us, and I'm fed up with it. Does anyone have that answer, or Madam Clerk?
From what, Madam? Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
The City Council does have subpoena powers.
That is good to know.
Would recommend reaching out to Solicitor Capizzi for some more information.
And if I'm not correct, we have a line item in our budget that allows such that, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, just a point of information.
Okay.
We have had in the past the three, four major utility companies up before us, and we had it like every month, we had them up here for once per month, and all three came up. We haven't seen them for a long, long time. Maybe it's time that we ask them to show up, whether it be in December or in January. I don't care, but I think it's time for us to request that they show up again and for us to bring it to them.
Great.
Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. Counsel Silvestri?
Thank you, Mr. President. And my two cents really is what Counsel Cogliandro stated as well. We can demand all we want for them to come before us, but each week, we have a different member of National Grid, and I'm not holding their feet to the fire. They're coming up, they're doing their job as being representative of the company. They probably don't know the issues besides getting us to complain on them what they are or where they are. So I don't hold them employees of National Grid responsible, but at some point, we need respect as a counselor and someone to come up here from National Grid and have this discussion with us. And I think now's the time. Enough enough talking about, enough is enough with us talking about it. Now's the time to make the demand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 25, Motion Presented by Counsel Rizzo that the mayor request the election commissioner to appear before the Revere City Council to discuss future election initiatives as well as the absentee ballot process. Voters have inquired as to the possibility of a receipt in the event of submitting an absentee ballot advising them of it being received.
Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a follow-up from our budget discussions. When Paul Fahey was up here, who I believe is doing a very good job, you know, we started having a discussion about the workings and goings-on in the Election Commission, and he had indicated he'd be willing to come up before the City Council and talk about some of the things that they're doing, not just when he, not just coming up here to, you know, with a warrant for an election or something like that, but just to come up here and let us know what some of the initiatives that he's taking on down there as the new election commissioner. And just as a side note, and it, you know, I had a resident ask me this last election, you know, "If I send in my ballot, how do I know they got it? How do I know my vote counted?" You don't have any, you don't have any, I mean, you mail it, and that's the end of it, right? So I'm wondering if there is a way where a voter could be notified that their ballot was received, short of them having to call the election commission and ask if it's been received, you know? So that's just what, you know, it kind of made me think when this person asked me the question. He was up here anyway, talking about, you know, he wanted, actually, he wanted to go into more detail. So I think it's a good time, maybe, to have him come up and just have a conversation with him. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any comments? Any other comments? No? All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 26, Motion Presented by Counsel Rizzo that the city clerk invite Northeast Regional Vocational School Committee Man Anthony Cagiano to appear before the Revere City Council to discuss the work currently being done at the Revere Society for Cultural and Historical Preservation, as well as other proposed projects utilizing resources stemming from the vocational school in Wakefield.
Counsel Rizzo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to save most of my questions and comments for when School Committee Man Anthony Cagiano appears, but really, in his first term, he is just doing an outstanding job. Some of the projects that, well, one project in particular, the Revere Society for Cultural and Historical Preservation, he's got a whole crew down there that's really doing them a great service. The kids and the instructors doing a great service to the community, saving us a lot of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, and that's just one project that he has online. So he's really jumped into this job with both feet, and, you know, and we never really have, you know, a real dialogue about what's going on with the Volk. I mean, we've got a lot of our kids that attend the Volk, but yet they get very little attention from us. So I think it'll be good for him to come up here, let us know about the new vocational school that's being built, let us know about how many seats are available to Revere kids, how many kids are on the list. There's so many questions that I personally want to ask that he might be able to shed some light on. So I'm looking forward to seeing him up here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counsel Rizzo. I was down there today, and those kids are terrific, you know, and what's hap, you know, and I don't want to take the wind away from Anthony when he comes up here to talk just about that particular issue, but they're giving us all the labor. And there has to be about 10 kids working in that whole building, rewiring an old, old, old building. And it's a safety issue anyway, but what it's costing the city is just for the supplies and the stock. So it's a great, great program, and I know he's trying to get some kind of program into Revere High School so the kids don't have to go to Wakefield and do it here in Revere. So I think it's great. I'll look forward to hearing more he has to say. Thank you.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 27, Motion Presented by Counsel Novoselsky that the mayor request the traffic commission to establish two 15-minute parking spaces at Shirley Avenue for a CJ Juice Bar.
Counsel Novoselsky?
Self-explanatory, Mr. President.
All in favor, all opposed? So ordered. No further business. This concludes tonight's City Council meeting. Our next meeting is on December 5th. Thank you, and have a good night.